Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting for the City of Falls Church on Monday, April 23rd. If you please rise and pledge allegiance with me.
Allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Ms. Schau, if you would go ahead and call the roll.
Ms. Berry.
Here.
Ms. Gardner. Ms. Gardner is absent. Mr. Kaylin.
Here.
Mr. Pepe.
Here.
Mr. Snyder.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mayor Baruch.
Here.
Thank you, council.
We don't have any validations of notices of special meetings. If I can get a motion to adopt the meeting agenda, and I believe we're going to have one change to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion. Is this the appropriate time to do so?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that TR-12-09, the draft pedestrian plan, be withdrawn from further deliberations that is currently drafted and referred to staff to reflect the comments received from citizens concerned about the potential loss of on-street parking, complete streetscapes, sidewalk additions beyond the curb line, and other aspects of the plan. The plan will not include any reduction of available on-street parking, and that the staff is directed to work with a council liaison and the Pedestrian Plan Citizen Task Force and hold additional town hall meetings as necessary to gather further input on the draft plan, and that the scheduled date for council consideration of the plan be deferred to June 25, 2012, to provide additional time for these changes to be made with additional public input, public review, and public approval.
And why don't we take that motion up after the proclamation? So if I can get a second, and then we'll take it up for public comment right after we do the proclamations, and also for discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I second that, and I also move to amend the agenda to take up that action immediately following the proclamations.
Thank you. Okay. We have, yeah, I'm sorry, we need a vote on the agenda.
This is a vote on just changing the agenda?
This is just on the agenda. Okay. All in favor of approving the agenda as amended? Say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? The ayes have it, the agenda is adopted with the change. And we have several proclamations this evening. The first one is actually an Employee of the Year recognition, so I would ask that Mr. Barrett step forward and do the honors.
We'll have our column of the second. Evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We are glad to be here tonight to recognize Sue Richter as the 2011 Employee of the Year. She was selected from the nominations that we received by the Employee Review Board. Also pleased to have Jerry Barrett, the Chair of the Review Board, here tonight, and I'll let him read the letter that they sent us, which, the reasons why they are nominating Sue for the Employee of the Year.
I'm Jerry Barrett, and I have my colleague with me who is also on the board, and he'll read the proclamation. This is Glenn Stevens, the newest member of the board.
Dear Ms. Richter, it is great pleasure and sincere thanks for your creativity, hard work, and city goal accomplishments during 2011 that we congratulate you on your selection as the 2011 Falls Church City Employee of the Year. Your success in providing improved services to the city's most vulnerable residents has enhanced the Housing and Human Service Department's programs for these targeted residents. The administration of the city's Fair Wheels program has benefited from your efforts via phone or in person to get to know the 110 persons in that program and to assure that their needs are being met. Your hard work and expertise on the Community Development Block Grant Program has improved that program by your regularly writing understandable information on the ever-shifting grant amounts to the Housing Commission, which is composed of volunteers who may not have expertise on federal funding. The expertise in gathering and presenting data and finances which you have developed has improved the city's inter-jurisdictional contract administration with Fairfax County for family and health services. These contracts are complex, with their own nuances and unique histories. You not only served the city in a professional manner, you did so with patience, sensitivity, and kindness while fostering our residents' sense of community. By all accounts, your human touch is much appreciated. Your outstanding work during 2011 has improved city services for deserving residents, made their lives better, and made Falls Church a place we can all be proud of. Therefore, on behalf of the Falls Church community, please accept our gratitude for your dedicated work and our congratulations on your successes.
Therefore, we have added Sue Richter's name to our plaque, which we, this is the plaque of the highest honor for city employees. We started recognizing Employees of the Year 1987, so Sue is on here now for the employee for 2011. And with that, I would ask if we could step forward. I also have a little gift for Sue that perhaps the mayor can give her, and if we can get a picture up there with everybody.
All right. Whereas both the GMHS Mustang Girls Basketball Team and the GHMS Scholastic Bowl Team won championships in their respective competitions early in 2012, and whereas March 10, 2012, won the GMHS Mustang Girls Basketball Team is the fourth state title won by the Mustang Girls and winning titles in 1998, 2008, and 2009, whereas the GMS Scholastic Bowl Team won its third consecutive state title on February 25, 2012, having gone undefeated through the district, region, and state tournaments, and whereas the GMHS Boys Team was victorious up to the last game of the Virginia State Championship Tournament, where the title was just out of reach this year, and whereas the Mustang spirit has spurred both the Boys' and Girls' Basketball Teams as well as the Scholastic Bowl players onto victory after victory around the state of Virginia, and whereas all students who pushed themselves to compete on any level in any activity are winners. Therefore, I, Nader Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim April 24th as Mustang Day in the City of Falls Church and encourage all students and city residents to pay homage to the fabulous George Mason High School Mustangs as they celebrate this day in their honor. In witness, therefore, I unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 23rd day of April 2012. Thank you. Kathy, do we have anybody here to receive?
I believe someone from the schools is coming forward.
Oh, great. Dr. Bird, I didn't see you over there. Welcome. That is your spot.
Yeah, well, thank you so much. We always appreciate the city council's support of our programs. We have an embarrassment of riches at George Mason High School. As you read the list of our accomplishments in the last several years, there, we do so well academically, artistically. We just recently had our IB Arts Show. Our musicians are amazing. Our athletes are obviously amazing. We excel in mind, body, and character, and it's due in large part to the support that we receive from our community. So thank you so much for recognizing the tomorrow as Mustang Day. It's Mustang Day every day at George Mason High School, but we appreciate that everyone else will be wearing red and black tomorrow. Please visit us and visit us during our competitions at our field. We'd love to have you there. Thank you.
Not yet. We need you.
Council, if you could. One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three.
Great. Thank you. Thanks. Vice Mayor Snyder, if you'd read the next proclamation, please.
This is one I'm particularly proud and pleased to read. Whereas since 1985, the President and Congress have designated the first week of May as Public Service Recognition Week for federal, state, county, and city employees, and whereas every day of the year and all hours of the day and night, city employees provide critically important public services to citizens of the City of Falls Church and the region. And whereas the city council and mayor ask the public to join them in recognizing and celebrating the city's dedicated employees for their work in providing essential services to the public, including promoting public safety with the higher standards of professional law enforcement, providing a world-class public education for our children, hosting and promoting wonderful special events, enriching our lives with great books and library services, maintaining our streets and sidewalks, providing vital water and sanitary sewer services, developing recreation programs for all ages, caring for the elderly and persons in need, promoting well-planned, high-quality development, caring for our trees, and providing the Falls Church style of personal and responsive customer service at all times. And whereas we ask more of our city employees with each year, and city employees always seem to go the extra mile to meet the needs of Falls Church citizens.
Now, therefore, I, Nader Baruch, the Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of May 6 through the 12th, 2012, as Public Service Recognition Week, and thank all city employees for their contributions during the past year which helped make the City of Falls Church such a great place to live, work, and play. In witness thereunto, I unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 23rd day of April 2012. Thank you. Shields, who is receiving this? I would take it you are, as the city manager.
Thank you. Thanks. Yeah, thank you.
And also, we have so many federal employees that work and that live in the city, and this recognition, I think, is for them as well, but it is great to work with the community of, for all of our city employees.
One, two, three, and one more. One, two, three. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Thanks. Mr. Webb, if you would read the next proclamation, please.
Whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk is a time-honored and relevant part of the local government that exists throughout the world, and whereas the Office of Municipal Clerk is the oldest public servant, and whereas the Office of the Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, local governing bodies, and agencies of government, and whereas the Municipal Clerk has pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and partiality and rendering equal service to all, and whereas the Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community, and whereas the Municipal Clerk continues to strive to improve the administration of the Office of the Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meeting of their state, provinces, county, and international professional organizations, and whereas through competition, completion of education programs at Old Dominion University College of Business and Public Administration and other programs approved by the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, both the City of Falls Church City Clerk and Deputy City Clerk have attained Master of Municipal Clerk, MMC, and Certified Municipal Clerk, CMC designation respectively.
Now, therefore, I, Nader Baruch, Mayor of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, do hereby proclaim the week of April 29 through May 5 as Municipal Clerk Week in the City of Falls Church, and extend the appreciation of our Municipal Clerk, Deputy Municipal Clerk, and all Municipal Clerks for the vital service they perform and the extremely exemplary dedication to the community they represent. In witness thereof, I unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Falls Church, Virginia, to be affixed this 23rd day of April 2012. Kate Scaffold.
Oh, clerks. Oh, clerks. All right. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you.
And Kathy, please also extend our thanks to Veronica as well. Well done. Thank you.
I will. It was her idea.
All right. We are on to the motion that was presented regarding the pedestrian plan. What I propose to do, even though we've got a first and a second on it, I think it would be beneficial, just so it's fresh on everybody's memory, if we can have it reread, and I know the council's got it on the dais as well. Kathy, do you have it?
I do.
Okay. If you don't mind reading it, and then we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment.
I'll be happy to read the motion. This motion was made by Ms. Berry and seconded by Mr. Snyder. That TR-12-09, the draft pedestrian plan, be withdrawn from further deliberations as it is currently drafted, and referred to staff to reflect the comments received from citizens concerned about the potential loss of on-street parking, complete streetscapes, sidewalk additions beyond the curb line, and other aspects of the plan; that the plan will not include any reduction of available on-street parking; that staff is directed to work with a council liaison; and the Pedestrian Plan Citizen Task Force and hold additional town hall meetings as necessary to gather further input on the draft plan; and that the scheduled date for council consideration of the plan be deferred to June 25, 2012, to provide additional time for these changes to be made with additional public input, review, and approval.
Michelle, I'd like to go ahead and open this motion up for public comment. I've got several speaker slips, so I'll call two people at a time, just so they know the order. Mr. Tom Kay, and then followed by Hal Morgan. And if you'd please come forward, state your name and your address for the record.
Mayor Baruch, and city council. My name is Tom Kay. I live at 905 Hillwood Avenue. I've come with a concern about the city's bicycle and pedestrian plan. We learned about this plan only recently. I attended the city meeting on the plan last Thursday, and we were told that it was merely a toolbox. It is far beyond a toolbox. It is a highly detailed implementation plan. If it was a toolbox, it would cover about five pages, but instead it is a detailed plan of 90 pages with many maps, with colored lines and dots indicating exactly where each kind of tool would be used. We were also told that there would be a later time, maybe years later, when the city would come to each neighborhood to get a sign-off of the plan for their area. The plan contains no description of this process that I could find, or what these areas would be. Would there be a percentage of homeowner votes required to go with the plan? What percentage? We only got verbal assurances during the Thursday meeting that final decisions would be made later, without any details of when and how that would be done. During the whole process of my learning about all this, I found out about a much more immediate problem. Real estate agents are required to reveal things that could affect a sale. Here's the scenario. Assume that the council passes a spike plan, as is on May 29, or whatever the other date was. Then someone on Hillwood Avenue wants to sell their house on the next day, or the next year, or in January 2020, or whatever. The real estate would have to say to each potential buyer, "The city currently has an official plan to disallow parking in front of these houses. We don't know if and when that change will be implemented." So even if the plan is never actually executed, the mere existence of a council-passed plan on the books decreases the value of our homes on the very day that it is passed. I have this petition with 66 signatures, which I've already given to City Clerk, against the current plan's removal of the parking lanes on Hillwood Avenue. We ask that the plan be modified accordingly before being passed. Thank you.
Very much. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Hal Morgan, and to be followed by Mr. Charles L. Perkins.
Mayor Baruch, members of the council. My name's Hal Morgan. I live at 907 Hillwood Avenue, and I'm here to read a motion that was passed by the Greater Hillwood Citizens Association last week. The Greater Hillwood Citizens Association opposes the portion of the City of Falls Church pedestrian, bicycle, and traffic calming strategic implementation plan that eliminates parking on Hillwood Avenue. The following issues support our opposition. No parking for guests and relatives, no parking for home maintenance and property maintenance vehicles, some residents have no or shared driveways. Guests, relatives, maintenance vehicles would be forced to park on Fairfax County streets, creating a hardship for them and likely reaction against the city by Fairfax County, i.e., permit parking only. If there's a parking ban on Hillwood, it would lessen the number of potential buyers when homes do go on the market. More significantly, it would effectively devalue homes on Hillwood, resulting in less tax income for the city. Eliminate parking on-street, eliminate on-street parking on Hillwood would create the perception that the street is even wider, with the result that traffic speeds will increase, and this is opposed to the whole idea of traffic calming. And if I can add a personal note outside of this, I think that as you go forward, I think the Citizens Advisory Commission or Committee for this plan should be expanded to include some of the neighborhood groups. Thank you.
Thank you. And just on that comment, I would just point that out to Mr. Shields. I think that would be a great idea to make sure that all neighborhoods that are impacted through associations be contacted, and we get a rep on as the plan is being completely reworked. And just so the public is aware of the motion that's on the table, the motion is actually to withdraw the plan as it's currently drafted. Mr. Charles Perkins is next, followed by Dimitri Pastore.
Yeah, my name is Charles Perkins. I live at 904 Hillwood Avenue in Falls Church. Sunday, a week ago, not this Sunday, but the Sunday before that, I was lucky that Mr. Tom Kay come across and asked me to sign a petition that I knew nothing about. The plan that the Planning Commission had submitted, oh, I don't know whether, how it goes, but apparently the Planning Commission got in touch with 800 people from someplace. I don't know where. But if it was any on Hillwood, I don't know. And he showed me this plan, and I almost fell out on the floor. They want to take our parking to have a bike lane? Anyway, I don't think the Planning Commission's doing a job. I don't know who is head of that, and that in the future, when this city wants to do something that affects the citizens of any street, Lincoln Street or Hillwood Avenue, I don't care, they need to notify those people. They need to say, "Hey, this is what we want to talk to you about." They need to come and see us. They didn't do that, and we got shafted by this plan. And so we got upset, and we worked hard. And in Fairfax County alone, I have 82 signatures of people that oppose this plan, and some of them have already called and got in touch with Supervisor Smith to see what their reaction's going to be to it, and it's just not right. Like the man said, "You're going to devalue our homes if this goes through, any way, of shape or form, that takes our parking? You're going to have to cut our taxes," and that's not fair. Now, I think this thing's been talked to death in the last two or three meetings, Thursday night, and I think yesterday, but I'm appalled at what has come about, and I hope it never happens again, and I hope that we don't have to work so hard to get this many petitions, you know, to say no. Listen, if you take our parking on Hillwood Avenue, we're going to try to park in Fairfax. They're going to have no parking signs, parking permit only, toll and force. Where are we going to park? We going up to Shopping Center at Seven Corners and park in that lot? No, uh-uh. This is not going to work. I appreciate your time, and I hope you'll give us a lot of consideration, and that's about all I got to say.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And the next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Dimitri Pastore, followed by Mario F. Feal, I believe that's the pronunciation.
Mayor, members of the council. My name is Dimitri Gekas. I'm president of the Whittier Park Homeowners Association, and I live at 122 South Cherry. I think my opinion has already been expressed by many people, so I'm going to cut it short. The only thing I ask is, can we run an audit of the $325,000, how it was used by the Planning Commission? Thank you.
Thank you. And we had that query, I've actually passed that query before to the city manager, so he may, he may want to speak about it a little bit in his comments before we vote on the motion, but certainly we may need to do further work on that as well. The next speaker slip that I have is Mario F. Feal, followed by D. Lord.
I'm sorry. I missed her. Did you call Edmay?
Yes. It's, I'm sorry.
Edmay.
Edmay, sorry. That's correct.
Homeowners Association. Cherrywood borders Hillwood and Cherry and the Larry Graves Park. We were stunned by the information on this proposal. Nobody had heard of it, and so it was just really shocking. We have very limited parking in our area. If the Hillwood parking was removed, it would overflow down into Fairfax, and if you know that little corner down there, you know, between Hillwood and 50, it's already jammed with cars. And so we appreciate your concern about removing this completely. Cut the head of the steak and squash it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hopefully, the motion does accomplish that. And the next speaker slip that I have is from Mario F. Feal, followed by D. Lord.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Mario Feal, and I live in Cherrywood. I'm the secretary to the board. I know we have had a couple of days of a lot of meetings. I appreciate the mayor's presence yesterday at Sunday meeting. All I want to say is that this is the nice thing about democracy. As a Cuban-born, it is fascinating to see how democracy works at its best. However, this also reminds me a little bit of the bill that went through Congress whereby it was said, "You have to pass the bill in order to read, to know what it's all about." We were surprised at hearing about this development within just two days ago, and I had to hoof all around to get signatures from our community membership, which did not know a thing about this going on. All I would ask, and there are going to be more speakers saying more smarter and better things, but all I would like to add is, please keep the communities in mind when... things, but all I would like to add is, please keep the communities in mind when you are proposing anything. We are fairly visible, we are fairly open, and we would like to be, we would like to have communication and a relationship with you all, and that way we will prevent these things from occurring again, when a massive opswell of anger, disappointment, and just frustration over something that could have been handled in a better way. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. The next speaker slip that I have is D. Lord, followed by Kathy Simansky.
Good evening. I'm D. Lord. I live at 414 Great Falls Street. There was a time in my life when I appeared here fairly regularly, and I haven't been here in a very long time, and whenever I come, I'm struck by appreciation for the service of everyone on the city council. What you do is not easy. Most of us wouldn't like to do it, and I appreciate your interest and your effort. I'm also here to talk about the pedestrian plan, which on Great Falls Street, we only just in the last few days became aware of. The plan for Great Falls Street, as I understand it, would be to construct a sidewalk on both sides of the street. There's already a sidewalk on one side of the street, and if it's deficient, we should fix it. But to construct a sidewalk on both sides of the street would essentially destroy the street as we now know it, not only the landscape, but people's yards, and substantially diminish the value of their homes. And so when I heard about this plan, it reminded me of a game my son used to play on the computer that was called SimCity. You could create your own metropolis, and it sounds like somebody was playing with this device. Maybe they thought they could get money if they did this, but they suddenly decided to build a lot of sidewalks. Well, in a community that's 300 years old, as ours is, you can't just start putting sidewalks every place. Sidewalks, in my mind, are not the main priority for Falls Church. Our schools have always been our priority, our community has been our priority, trees, and the sense that Falls Church is someplace very special has been our priority. And I don't think this plan, as I understand it, reflects those priorities at all, and I am concerned that any substitute plan will not reflect those priorities. So I would agree with the previous speaker who suggested that the group that's looking at this plan be expanded, so that people with views like mine can be included. I don't think we have a community association on Great Falls Street. Maybe we should, but I, for one, would be very happy to serve on any type of committee, and I think my neighbors, a number of whom are here tonight and may speak to as well, would also be happy to serve. We would like that opportunity. As others have said, nobody likes to have these things suddenly pop up, and they are of extreme importance to us. This is where we live. For us, it's not a game, and so it really is of the utmost concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker slip I have is from Ms. Kathy Simansky, followed by Mary Welsh.
Good evening. I'm Kathy Simansky. I live at 915 Hillwood Avenue, and I'm here this evening to thank you very much for listening to our comments on this most important topic this past week. You've been patient in listening to repetitive comments, and what I will try to be tonight is, is not be repetitive. One of the things that I would like to call to your attention, that doesn't seem to have been called to your attention yet, is the idea of pedestrian safety. And I ask, when the plan is redrafted, that pedestrian safety be kept in mind, because if individuals are forced to park on side streets, particularly the four arterial streets that we're talking about, which are busy streets, that forces many people to walk back and forth across streets that we don't typically walk back and forth on, and it creates a very, very dangerous and precarious situation. And I don't think that's what any of us want, is to make a negative impact on public safety. Thank you.
The next speaker slip that I have is from Mrs. Mary Welsh, followed by Mr. Mike Carney.
Mayor and city council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Mary Welch. I'm vice president of the Cherrywood Homeowners Association, and I live at 2826 Flagmaker Drive. I would just like to speak in favor of the second item in this motion, which is that the plan not include any reduction of on-street parking. You've already heard the pleas from my neighbors, but I can, I'd just like to emphasize that. If you look at Hillwood, we have a townhouse community right across the street is Whittier Park, and all the homes down that street, we simply do not have enough parking, none of us do. And so we depend on that on-street parking to be the place where visitors park, where families, people who come to see us park, the workmen park. We urgently need that, that parking, and we ask you to, to please support this motion so that we have that, we don't risk losing that, that at this time. Also, I would like to point out, just as a comment, it is lost on, on, on the board, at least, my board, that what a biking trail would be needed on Hillwood Avenue. We are a bit lost on that. We don't know where you want the people to go, where you want them to start, or where you want them to finish, but we don't think biking to Seven Corners is particularly attractive prospect, and we just think it seems to be a bicycle path, beginning nowhere and ending nowhere. But we thank you very much for supporting the, the second part of this motion.
Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Michael Carney, followed by Mr. Jeff Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, city council, my name is Mike Carney. I'm a 25-year resident of 410 Great Falls Street. A little history, it was about 20 years ago when city council informed the neighbors on Great Falls that it was considering a sidewalk on the north side of Great Falls Street. All of my neighbors and I made our way up here 20 years ago to encourage the city council to consider putting a sidewalk in Cherry Hill Park, and to connect it up to Virginia Avenue. The city council also did that, and we thought that the issue had died. Here we are 20 years later, the same issue of taking personal property for the sidewalk north of the curb on, on Great Falls Street is back and tossed into our laps a second time. We're unhappy with this, and we don't think it's the right way to go. I also have a 200-foot tall elm tree in my front yard that is not going to withstand having sidewalk put around it. The other piece that I'd like you all to consider is that 17 years ago, when I came up here after my cars had been hit four times in front of my house, the city council was good enough to take our neighborhood recommendations to try and put a parking lane on Great Falls Street. That's been there now since 2004, I believe, and I'm pleased to say none of my cars have been hit since that's been in place. We don't have anywhere else to park, some of my neighbors don't either, and reducing the, or eliminating the parking on Great Falls Street would be a great detriment to us. Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Jeff Weaver, followed by Mr. Chris Hagadorn.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. A few weeks ago, I came to you with a petition on behalf of 60-some-odd members of residents of Lincoln Avenue who are very concerned about a parking proposal in this pedestrian plan. It was sort of, you may remember, it was a raucous meeting, there was a lot of employees here about the raise, and I was sort of speaking off-topic, but how different times are in just a few weeks. So I want to extend my appreciation to all the people in the city of Falls Church. It's really a testament to the civic-mindedness of the people in the city, that so many have come out and been engaged in this process. That petition has now grown, that I delivered to you, has now grown to over 70 signatures, and we have many others who want to sign on as well, and at a future date, I will submit it for the record, once I've acquired all the signatures of all the people on it. Since that meeting we had a few weeks ago, there's been a number of, there's been a town meeting, it was pre-raucous, there was a political debate on Sunday where this, these issues were addressed, and I want to thank all of you who have spent some time studying this issue and paying attention to it. I know Ms. Berry and Mr. Webb were at one of the events, and I want to say special thanks for the mayor, for his responsiveness, and to Mr. Snyder, who was one of the very early people who raised the alarm bell about this plan and its potential impact on the city. So if the council votes, as I think it will in a few minutes, that will leave the city planning office as the only supporters of bike paths on Lincoln Avenue, Hillwood Avenue, West Street, and other parts of the city. But beyond the parking situation, we really need to think about the foundational assumption of this plan, namely the complete streets project or approach, which some others have mentioned earlier, as described at the town meeting. That approach says that the ideal street has two lanes of traffic, two lanes of bike paths, two lanes of parking, two five-foot barriers, and two four- or five-foot sidewalks on that. Now, that approach may work well, as someone, someone used the example of SimCity, or if this was Prince William County, where we were building a large housing tract development, but in a community as old as ours, as small as ours, this approach may not be the appropriate scale for our residential areas. To the extent that we have a policy in the city of Falls Church regarding residential areas, the policy should be, except when circumstances are severe and neighbors support it, residential neighborhoods should not have their streetscape or, or feel changed dramatically. That should be the policy of the city. For instance, in terms of sidewalks, I'm sure there are many sidewalks on, or sides of streets that, that need sidewalks, and I'm not prepared here to say which ones those are, which ones those are not. And I'm not sure that the planners are particularly well-positioned to say which ones those are. That's because they left out the most crucial step in approaching this type of problem, namely, they didn't go and ask anybody who lives on these streets. I'm sure there are some people on sleepy residential streets who really don't want sidewalks on their streets, and those people's wishes should be honored. This approach for dealing with pedestrian traffic, pedestrian bicycle and traffic should be a bottom-up approach, not a top-down approach dictated by some doctrinaire traffic planning program. Finally, we need to ensure that whatever proposal goes forward has a real teeth in terms of the public being able to react to it. Neighborhoods that strongly oppose, in residents, in residential neighborhoods that strongly oppose this type of plan, should be able to block radical changes to their streetscape. In addition to that, the city should be required to provide estimates of the impact of any changes on the housing value of people who live in affected streets. Finally, I would just point out that you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, neighborhood associations. Lincoln Avenue is not represented by a neighborhood association either, just like Great Falls Street. And one of the points that has been raised often during these debates is, I think we need to make sure that we use the lowest-cost approach. Whatever problem we have, we should try the lowest-cost answer first. We have many demands in the city. People are talking about building a new high school over the course of the next few years. We're not being miserly. We want to make sure that what limited funds we have in a small community are used wisely. And so let's do the small thing first and figure out if we need to do the bigger thing later. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Chris Hagadorn, followed by Mr. Michael Novatny.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. This is a privilege for me to be here. I've been away for a number of years. We're residents at 410 Lincoln Avenue. We've been posted for the last decade in Tunisia, Egypt, Libya, and Iraq, so this, I have a profound appreciation for both the principles and practice of this type of democracy. So I don't have any particular comments that my colleagues and friends and neighbors have raised before. I appreciate, Mr. Mayor, your comments yesterday at the candidate's forum, confirming what is now, I've seen tonight in text. And the second item on, on-street parking, the, I appreciate seeing a commitment from you and the other members that, that the plan, which will be reviewed in June, will not contain that item. So we'll be back to hear the deliberations in June, and I'm sure that, that will be absent. Appreciate Mr. Weaver's comments as well. I think the neighbors all around us on Lincoln Avenue feel just as strongly as we do about on-street parking. So that's in the interests of brevity, I'll leave my remarks at that. If other comments on the budget, which, for the next motion, I'd like to, to make comments as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is Mr. Mike Novatny.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Michael Novatny. I live at 319 North Maple Avenue. I'm going to try something a little different. I'm going to speak in support of the pedestrian plan, at least for the first minute or so. You know, I've lived in the city now over four years. I do a lot of walking around the city. I do a lot of stroller pushing. I do a lot of biking, and I do a lot of dog walking. And sure, it would, it would really be nice to have sidewalks on two sides of the street where it can be achieved. It would be nice to have enhanced bicycle safety. It would be nice to have enhanced pedestrian safety, you know, again, where it can be achieved. I agree with previous speakers that where it's a case where you lose on-street parking, I am not in favor of that, but I think there are still a lot of opportunities where this plan can have a lot of good. The second thing I wanted to mention, I handed out a sheet. I don't like to raise issues where I can't also offer a solution. On North Maple Avenue, there's a proposal to change it to a one-way street and add a sidewalk on the second side of the street. I'm in support of both of those goals. However, the plan does propose to remove on-street parking. I am against it. We have residents that use it. We have Columbia Baptist Church that uses it. We also have the State Theater that uses that parking as well. What I passed out, you can look it over, is a proposal for a street section that works, that gets on-street parking on both sides, gets a bike lane, and it gets a one, one-way traffic lane, and it works. It's, it actually is based on the, the actual width of the street. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to make sure staff got a copy of it. Mr. Shields, do you have a copy of the, of the handout? Thank you. Those are all the speaker slips that I have. I wanted to, again, thank for, thank.
I had a speaker slip for the fund balance, but I'd rather speak to this, if I may.
Absolutely.
I'd want, I want to speak in opposition to the motion. I think it's perfectly legitimate to use public infrastructure to discourage the ownership and use of automobiles and to encourage the use of bicycles. Arlington has done that rather effectively, and I also would take opposition to the fact that it's going to devalue the, or depreciate the value of homes. I think you would find that it would appreciate the value of homes across the entire city. Now, there may be reason to defer it and seek more input if there are particularly problematic areas of parking that are disappearing, but we don't want to continue to treat public parking as if it's private. And so if people tend to have too many cars that fit on their property, they should consider liquidating or selling them. Now, if you pass this motion as it states, number two is an outright prescription on any parking reduction, and so I would not like to see that happen. I think some parking reduction needs to still be in, in the opportunities available to the planners. And flexibility as well. It may require flexibility that we're needing to expand the streets through the use of eminent domain, or as I believe the city already has an easement into most people's property, that could expand the streets, create parking as well as a bike lane. But I don't think you want to completely restrict the possibility of reducing parking. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the speaker slips that I have. Are there any other members of the public that wish to address the motion that the council is going to take up? I did want to, before council provides its feedback, I wanted to give staff an opportunity to provide any comments they have.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, members of council. What I think is important for me to say at this point is that clearly with the input that we've, we've had, we need more time to work on the plan, and the motion before council would, would give us that time. On one hand, I would state that the system is working well. When we have public processes, we want public input. On the other hand, I will take responsibility for the fact that when you do take things out to the public, you do want them to go out to a public that is not surprised by them, or is receiving plans that won't fly. And, and I think that the, one of the tests for on-street parking is just sort of the personal test. Would I want to lose on-street parking in front of my house? I depend on it. I have two vehicles, and, and so that, that test really wasn't applied when, when, when you look at the conceptual plans that were put into the plan. Now, having said those two things, my observation of the work of the task force is that this group of people is, a group of people with deep group of people is, a group of people with deep experience in the community with the highest intentions to make our streets safe and make them fully functional. And they came forward, working with staff and working with our consultants, staff really guiding, I think, the work of both with its deep experience in the community, to try to come forward with a vision and a plan to implement that vision to make our streets safer and more fully functional. But again, there are aspects of this plan that won't fly, and so, we need to go back to the drawing board and make the necessary corrections and modifications to it, make sure it reflects the community's priorities and desires for their, for their streets and for the accessibility and for the transportation infrastructure that they benefit from. And so, I think the process that's laid forward in this motion will give us additional time to do that, and I think our expectation from a staff perspective is, if we're not ready by June 25th, then we will recommend additional time. That date is a date that I proposed to council for the purpose of setting a target date. So, rather than just withdrawing it to a date uncertain so the work could happen and then have it come back, I think it's probably more satisfactory for the public, as well as for the whole process, to have a date to shoot for, and so, people know what the expectation is in terms of time to be engaged to make improvements to this plan. But again, if we're not ready by June 25th, then we will recommend an additional deferral of time to make sure we get it right. And I'm very confident that working together with the community and staff together, we will get it right. Thank you.
Shields. All right, council, I open up for discussion before we take a vote, so, Robin.
Thank you. First of all, when I knew this, when this first came out, I knew that the absolute biggest problem was going to be the whole parking issue, and clearly, that's the biggest problem that's come out of this. I do want to say there are some great things in the current plan, and I'm glad that we're having a lot of conversation about it. I'm sorry that the community has a sense that it took us so long to get it to them, and I'm sure that was not the intent of particularly the task force that we had put in place and has been working for about a year on this, but that's the way it is right now, and I'm glad that we're extending the time. I actually agree with our last speaker in regards to number two in this motion, and I know I raised this with city council. I agree, not every street should be closed for on-street parking. But what this line says is, we have now made a commitment that there will be no street closed for, for no parking. So, I think it's, there might be some streets in our community that would be better for a bike lane and maybe not have parking. I'm not saying that that's Lincoln, and I'm also not saying it's Hillwood. I'm saying there might be some, but to put this language in here as it is means we will never, in any pedestrian plan, reduce any available on-street parking, and I think that's being short-sighted. So, I'd like to see that language changed just a little, to not make it so definitive as, "This will never happen." That's my request.
I don't think that we've got a proper motion, so unless there's, you know, a friendly amendment, which I'm not hearing.
Well, then, I would like, I thought we were in comment, so I haven't made the friendly amendment yet.
Yeah, we can, why don't we do this?
I hadn't gotten any feedback from anyone on my comment to everyone last week and how I felt about that, so I'm really not sure.
And just a little bit about a process, just so the public knows sort of the discussion that we're having. Myself and other councils, council members asked that this motion be drafted, so it's been, it's been sort of circulating in various forms. The council has not had an opportunity as a group to meet together on it, so this is the first time, actually, we're seeing the motion. That's why you're seeing some of the dialogue about it, is because we need to have the discussion about the motion publicly, and this has been our first opportunity to do that. So, Ms. Berry?
Yeah, I made this, this motion, and I made so somewhat conflicted as a, as a bike commuter myself. I think there is much merit in the plan, but what I think happened, and I was privileged to be part of the Hillwood Association meeting on the Tuesday, and then the Community Center meeting on the Thursday, and then the candidates' debate on Sunday, and what, what I think, what I think happened is that we had a, what I would call a shock and awe rollout of this plan, which did nobody any good, and I think it was not helpful. And I think, I think what was interesting is that, that there's, there was some confusion about the difference between input and review and approval. This plan did have a lot of community input. What it didn't have was community review and community approval. There were lots of data points that were collected, but once those points were collected, and I think Mr. Snyder and I raised this issue early on in the game, the resulting decision-making or the resulting aspirational design ended up being something the community simply couldn't accept because it was, it was either improbable or impractical, or the community was not, was not fully engaged. And so, what I am suggesting now is that we stop this in its tracks, reboot, rethink this through, and get far more community, as they say, not so much input, but community approval, review, and serious engagement. So, the community sounds like it's ready to roll up its sleeves and work with council, guide council, and I think that's terrific. Thank you.
Barry? Mr. Webb?
Thank you. After hearing the input from the citizens on Thursday night at the town hall meeting about this project, I too heard the aspects of this process that citizens were surprised when they learned about this particular process, and I think what we're proposing now will help to fix that problem, and by delaying this until June gives citizens within possibly affected communities the opportunity to actually play a role in the, as Councilman Berry said, the community review process of it, and working with the Citizen Task Force and staff to make this process better. There are some good aspects to this plan that I think many people will, will agree, particularly with the safe routes to school and working towards aspects of it with bus stops. I think there are good aspects to this plan that we need as a community to move forward and work towards, but this particular aspect of it is a part that we need to go back to the drawing boards and look at other ways and opportunities to improve the walkability of our community. The sheet that Mr. Novatny just provided us gives us an additional tool to look at, but I think we do need that additional time, and potentially, if we need past June 25th, I think we should do that as well to make sure that we get it right and get the community input that is desperately needed on this particular project.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. I worked in various regional bodies with city staff to put together the grant funds that, that I think made this study possible. I was there when we first walked the streets to take an inventory of places where there were cracked sidewalks and there were difficulty for disabled people. But something in the middle of this process went very badly wrong, and so, when I got the final report, my reaction was immediate, and I provided that reaction in the March 22nd, the issue of the Falls Church News Press. And let me read to you just what I said then, because it pretty much expresses my views today. While positive in intent and goals, it goes badly off-track in terms of its huge unnecessary costs and its multiple serious negative consequences. The overall price tag is $22 million, requiring a diversion of tax dollars from pressing city needs such as schools, stormwater, and public safety, or higher taxes for all. Worse yet, dozens, if not hundreds, of property owners face the destruction of their fences, the uprooting of trees, and the loss of their on-street parking. That's because the plan doesn't just provide for needed safety improvements, but instead as wants, such as sidewalks where they're not needed and removal of on-street parking to allow for bicycle lines and other, quote, "improvements," end quote. The tragic irony is that this waste of money actually might make our streets less safe by making some streets one-way, thereby encouraging higher speeds and cut-through traffic, and removing our citizens' parked cars, an inexpensive traffic-calming measure. It also jeopardizes the historic look and feel of Falls Church that sets us apart from the rest of Nova suburban sprawl, and the reduced on-street parking will also hurt our businesses that rely on it to serve their customers, who in turn help support the city through meals and sales taxes. And this is the point that I made then, and I believe this resolution today, which I'm co-sponsoring, does. It is imperative that we force the process to go back to the drawing board by identifying essential safety improvements and eliminating projects such as new sidewalks across the street where they already exist in residential neighborhoods. Otherwise, all taxpayers will face steep new bills, and many property owners will wake up one morning to find city backhoes chewing up their yards, tearing out their fences, uprooting their trees, and placing no parking signs where they have parked their cars for decades. So, I'm pleased to co-sponsor this resolution. I think the citizens have made very clear what they want, what they expect, and it's our job to, as representatives, to do exactly that. And I hope then when this plan comes back, it will in fact address safety needs, that it will, that will help us improve our quality of life, but it will be responsive to the comments that our citizens have made and that I've summarized again this evening. This is not, as some would say, a failure of communication or process. This is a failure of policy. The fact is that some policies underlying this plan are simply not acceptable. Some policies may very well be, and we need to sort those out and figure out what they are, but this plan and all these negative results and all the drawings and all the specific things came out of some fundamental policy flaws. We need to address those. This motion, I think, calls for that. It eliminates some of those policies on their face and calls for very close examination of others. So, hopefully, we can get the policies right and what will flow from that. There's a plan that we can all support that will make our cities safer, make it more convenient for pedestrians and bicyclists, and at the same time, protect property rights and the rights of our citizens and taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Pepe?
Well, I guess I've been doing this enough years that I'm not going to get quite as outraged, but it may be a good warning to those of you sitting in the crowd. I've been serving in one elected capacity or another for about 15 years now, and all because something like this came up, and I was outraged, and I went to the meeting, and I kind of ranted a lot, a lot, I was a lot less polite than a lot of you were tonight expressing your discontent, and somebody said to me, "Well, why don't you get involved then and do something about it?" And that's how I ended up sitting here. So, one of the things, regardless of what happens, is I think anyone here who showed up, and a lot of you are already involved, but certainly, there's going to be lots of opportunities to stay involved in this and have a say in what the final outcome looks like, one way or another. So, I think there's a process there to accommodate that. I don't, I don't have a problem with doing this. I just view this as a natural step in the process that my assumption was, we'd have public hearings and town meetings, and people would like and not like things, and the things we don't like, we'd pull back and go back and think about again. One of the great things about living here is everybody gets to show up at a meeting like this and say something about it, and I think people do listen, so I think that's the next step. I do seem to remember back when I was chairman of the school board, when this thing started, I think there was some discussion about this, and at the time, the discussion was mainly about safe routes to schools and sidewalk safety and pedestrian safety. And I think what you have now is sort of, in my mind, what happens when the government gets a little too involved in some of these things down the road, so I think we need to take a step back and have everybody say in that, but, and not lose sight of where it started, because I know a lot of it had to do with what some of the commentators addressed tonight about being able to walk safely to schools, being able to provide a place, you know, and that's why there were crews that went out and looked at all the sidewalks, and there were neighborhood surveys. So, we're at the far end. Maybe we take a step back, we go back to some of those routes, and we come up with something that works for everybody.
Mr. Kellin?
I will support the motion.
Thank you.
Ruth?
I'm going to keep it.
Mayor Baruch?
Rather, Robin.
Thank you. I did want to go back to the number two, and I know that everyone here thinks number two is the be-all and end-all of this proposed motion, which I know that Ms. Berry spent a lot of time putting together, so thank you for doing that. I know that everyone's very outraged by the plan and the process that went on, but again, I don't want to throw out the entire baby with the bathwater here. Hopefully, I'm using the right, I know I used a wrong one before, so I want to make sure, you know, I used the right one this time. And I have some suggestion for language. Again, my fear is, because everyone is so outraged, and we've had these conversations over the past week, and we don't want our on-street parking taken away, that we're forgetting that, you know, maybe two streets over, there is a place where on-street parking should be taken away. And by putting this language in here, we're saying, "Never again shall the city of Falls Church eliminate on-street parking," and again, I think it's short-sighted, so.
Excuse me, would you like to have your parking taken away on your street?
Hey, I didn't say your parking on your street either, ma'am.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Let's, let's, let's have Ms. Gardner finish and then give council a chance to discuss it further, and then if we need to, I'm happy to open it up if there's a change to the motion that's on the table.
So, so what I suggested was that the plan will not exclude the possibility of reduction of available on-street parking, but will require neighborhood input and review. Now, I know, again, everyone's outraged, but if we come up with the suggestion, and again, I'm not saying that we would, that Hillwood should be, then we would not be able to change it unless we have buy-in from the community in that area. I'm not trying to say we're going to unilaterally go out and close, you know, streets to on-street parking, and I believe that Hillwood should not be closed to on-street parking, just like I believe Lincoln should not be closed, but I don't want to eliminate the opportunity of looking at that possibility in other neighborhoods that maybe there should be. So, I'm just asking for a little flexibility, and that's the language I suggest.
I want to ask the, the person who moved the motion whether they would be willing to take that as a friendly amendment. Ms. Berry, it's to you.
Actually, no, but I understand the, the character and the intent of Ms. Gardner's language. I think flexibility is critical. There is a small distinction between reduction and elimination, but, and that's why I did not use the word elimination, but I think we need to send a very strong signal to the men and women who have shown up consistently at these meetings and said, "This is a non-starter." And, and, you know, I think Ms. Gardner's point is, is well-taken, but I think in, under these circumstances, I would prefer to keep the original language to reduction.
In the efforts of the democratic process, which I strongly believe in, and also an immigrant to the country, Ms. Gardner, do you want to make a motion? The friendly amendment wasn't taken, but if you want to make that into a motion, and we can see if there's a second, and if there's not, then it fails.
No, I'm just, again, I'm just assuming that from the tenor that everyone has agreed to accept the current language, that any type of motion or change would not be accepted because we are looking at the will of our constituents, specifically the constituents that live in specific areas of our community, and if that's the way that we would like to put our language in, I hope that in a future time, if we revisit it and say, you know, maybe we should change that language further on down through further review, there's the opportunity to do that. So, we can stay with the language.
Thank you. Okay, so we have the original motion. That's what we're going to be voting on. I think it's, I just want to make my comments just very short, succinct. You know, we've absolutely heard the citizens, so I thank you all for coming forward and providing us with your input. I'm going to absolutely support the motion because I'm the one who is pushing to have this done tonight and a motion brought forward. So, I thank my fellow council members for their indulgence to kind of have an additional item put on the agenda this evening so we could take care of this matter and move on to other business. So, I wanted to specifically thank Ms. Berry and Vice Mayor Snyder. I want to align myself with their comments, and I thank Ms. Berry specifically, who we've had some exchanges back and forth over the weekend to try to get this motion prepared and have other council members look at it. So, thank you, Ms. Berry, for that. And I'm going to ask you to also serve as the liaison if you so desire in a moment. So, it, first of all, I wanted to thank my fellow council members for their patience in having this motion come forward.
Yeah, I know.
So, I wanted to thank the council members for entertaining the motion and having it come forward this evening, and also staff. Staff did have input on this motion as well, so I wanted to thank staff for their work as well in making this motion come forward. So, I am going to support it. I think this unequivocally says that the PED plan in its draft form is withdrawn, and we're going to be working through it again with certain guidance that on-street parking is not going to be reduced as part of the policies, and we are going to be getting comments on other aspects of the plan as well. So, it does allow for further public input on other areas of the plan. So, this, this plan is really going back in some ways to receive complete public input before it comes back before council. So, that's really the intent. I want to just be very clear about that. And what I'm expecting, and this gets to some of the other comments that were raised, is I absolutely think that we need to expand the PED Plan Citizen Task Force to include representatives if we are going to be talking about specific possible projects. Even if they're possible, I think we need that neighborhood impact engagement now. You've clearly been heard on that issue, and the reason why I'm actually supporting the second part of the motion, which is to, that the plan will not include any reduction of available on-street parking, is because I think we went down to the stage of implementation of discussing it with communities on a block by block, and I think we're getting the clear message that that's not something that the citizens desire. So removing it off the table doesn't, doesn't distress me because I think we've had numerous meetings now where that's been heard loud and clear. So I appreciate that feedback, so I am going to be supporting it. And thank, thanks to our citizens for their input on this. Thanks to the task force for the great work that they're, that they have done and for their continuing work, and, and staff who's going to have to do the yeoman's work on redoing the plan. So with that, I'm going to ask that the vote be called, and also acknowledge that we did receive written comments, which I'm sure we've all looked at on, on the dais. We all have copies of those as well.
On the motion before council regarding the PED Plan. Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kellen?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. We are on to oath of... We are on to oath of office, oath of office to new board and commission members. Ms. Bishow, do we have anybody here to be sworn in?
I'm not aware of any, Mr. Mayor.
We have several, we have one speaker slip that's not on the matter of, on the agenda, so I'm going to open that up first. Ms. Marty Mazurv, who is going to address the Women of the Blues at Creative Cauldron.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, my name is Marty Mazurv, and I live at 708 Berry Street. And I'm a little disappointed that I didn't have my two minutes to deliver my remarks before we lost our audience.
Come back in, please.
I am here on behalf of Creative Cauldron. Creative Cauldron and its artistic partner Falls Church Arts are two local, locally-founded nonprofits for the arts that live at Art Space Falls Church. In anticipation of the Tinnerhill Blues Festival coming this June, Creative Cauldron is presenting a blockbuster original blues review from May 3rd to May 20th at Art Space Falls Church, which is at 410 South Maple Avenue. Women of the Blues celebrates the lives and music of the 20th century's great blues divas. The show is being directed by Matt Connor, actor, songwriter, and director of our full production of Nevermore. Art Space will be transformed into a funky blues club. You'll be entertained by a quartet of versatile female vocalists, Helen Hayes Award nominees Carolyn Cole and Ashley King. They were nominated for their work in Hairspray at Signature Theater, and tonight, the Helen Hayes Awards are being decided. So tomorrow, we may be able to say that they're not just nominees, but they are winners, and they're coming right here to the City of Falls Church. Musical theater star Shayla Simmons and indie soul recording artist Tarina Zemzo. For those of you wanting the full experience, we have a great deal. You can purchase four tickets, get a bottle of wine, and sit at one of the bistro tables set up on the floor. You could get all of this for $100, although I can't guarantee that you'll get a chance to sing. Opening night is May 3rd, and the show runs through May 20th at 7:30 on Thursday through Sunday evenings. Tickets can be purchased online at creativecauldron.org. We had sellouts for both Nevermore and for Madeline and the Gypsies, so we hope to see you there and encourage you to get your tickets early. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Marty. All right, those are all the speaker slips I have. Ms. Bishow, if you would summarize any written comments on matters that are not on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, you heard from many speakers who spoke on the PED Plan. Do you need to go over these? Any additional people?
I don't think so.
Okay. Let's see. With regard to the water system, we received two letters. One from Leah Sly at 600 Roosevelt Boulevard. She urged the council not to sell the water system. And the same, if not similar, letter was received by Tanya Roland at 2785 Devonshire Garden Court, also urging the council not to sell the water system. Mr. Robert Leguizanes, who is 409 South Virginia Avenue, commented on the city's fund balance policy and stated that surrounding jurisdictions have a much lower percentage in their reserves. Bruce Swenson at 311 North Lee Street complained about repairs to his street, which he believes have not been repaired properly. He wants to know why the city government is not holding the contractors accountable for properly repairing the damage resulting from their construction. Risa, or Riza Wilmeth of Hampton Court in Winter Hill commented on the flickering lights at Doodle Hoppers, and she believes it's detrimental to the local businesses in the downtown area. Bill Baskin, on behalf of the Oakwood Cemetery Association, thanked the council for the increased police patrols of the area at their request, which has eliminated the vandalism to the cemetery. Sandra Bolivar at 100 West Annandale Road wrote to council about the problem with drivers turning red on right at certain intersections in the city. She noted that she's been struck twice as a pedestrian. And by email this evening, Anthony, or Chip Brienza at 6533 Williams Walk in Falls Church, he said he went to the DMV Select Office right before 4:00 p.m., and even though they were supposed to be closed, he had great service. He supports any additional resources, resources they might need. He said it was a good experience for him, a true neighborhood, small-town, friendly, customer-oriented service. And those are all the other comments aside from budget.
Much. We are on to the report of the city manager to council. Mr. Shields?
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, and members of council. I would just like to report on two meetings that we've had in the last three days with respect to the potential sale of the city's water utility assets. We had a town hall meeting on Saturday at 10 o'clock here in council chambers, and we had a number of council members attend that meeting, along with 22 residents of, of our customer service territory and the city who attended this meeting. We received a number of, of very thoughtful questions, and we've recorded those questions, and we'll be posting them along with their responses on the city webpage. And we've also posted the, the PowerPoint presentation that we've used at that town hall meeting as well. It's part of our ongoing efforts to make sure that the community is well-informed about the process and the bidding process that we have initiated with the council's action at your last meeting. Also, since initiating this, this bidding process, we had our pre-bid meeting with potential bidders this morning at 10 o'clock. It also was well-attended. We had 18 people attend, 16, I'm sorry, and six companies were represented. And again, the, the companies that we have been expecting to participate in this process were in attendance at this, at this meeting this morning. That was a meeting to provide comprehensive information to prospective bidders and go through both a tour of our facilities. So we took a bus tour throughout the utility service territory to show our, show off our pump stations and our storage tanks and our other facilities, and to have interaction with staff, with the prospective bidders, and make sure that they have all the information they need to make an informed decision about whether to bid and what their bid price should be. I think both meetings were very effective, and I think we were off to a process that will have many steps along the way, but one in which will engage the public very thoroughly as the council works through its decision on the ultimate disposition of its water utility assets. Those are the two things I wanted to report on, and I'd be happy to answer any questions from council.
So any questions for the city manager? Mr. Kellen?
Just a comment. I attended the meeting, and one question that was asked was, does the city council support the sale of the water system? And I indicated that the fact that they were here indicated there was support for the sale of the water system, and I left it at that.
All right, others? Vice Mayor Snyder?
Yeah, I, the city council acted to put out bids. There are, we have the ability to not sell if we don't want to, and so I think that's important to keep in mind, that that decision to sell has not been made.
I think that's exactly right. I mean, the ultimate decision is going to happen after we, we receive the bids and make a determination. So there's a lot of decision points and also discussions with our citizens as well. So I think that's...
Respectfully, the, the decision is taken in November, right?
Correct. Correct. Ultimately.
Yep.
Ultimately, it's the decisions of the citizens. That is, even if we decide to pursue sale. So there's several decision points that need to happen before it even gets on the ballot. But ultimately, if the decision is made to sell from the council, then it goes to a voter's referendum. Okay. Any other requests or comments for Mr. Shields? Not seeing any, why don't we turn to the first item on the business agenda? Ms. Bishow, if you'd read the first item?
Counsel, I would recommend that the first three items be taken together so that you can have a unified public hearing on all three at one time.
Thank you. Yes, let's do that, please. Ms. Bishow, if you'd read one, two, and three?
Yeah, I'll be happy to, Mr. Mayor. First item is TO 12-06, Ordinance Setting the Rate of Tax Levy on Real Estate, Personal Property and Machinery and Tools, and All Other Properties Segregated by Law for Local Taxation in the City of Falls Church, Virginia for the Tax Year 2012. TO 12-07, An Ordinance Fixing and Determining the Budget of Expenditures and Revenues Appropriating Funds for the Fiscal Year 2013, General Fund, School Operating Fund, School Community Service Fund, and School Food Service Fund, Water Revenue Fund, and Sewer Revenue Fund. TO 12-08, An Ordinance Fixing and Determining the FY 2013, FY 2017 Capital Improvements Program Budget and Appropriating Expenditure and Revenue Funds for the Fiscal Year 2013.
Thank you. Mr. Shields?
I will just provide a brief staff report on each of these items. The first item, the ordinance setting the tax rate for real estate and for personal property. With respect to the real estate tax rate, this ordinance would hold the rate steady to the rate that is in effect for the current, or for calendar year 2011, and would hold it steady at $1.27 per each $100 of assessed value for calendar year 2012. Similarly, for the personal property tax rate, otherwise known as the car tax, but also applying to business tangible property, the rate would be at $4.84 per each $100 of assessed value, again, held, held steady from the current rates of the prior year. With respect to the budget, in my staff report, I'd just like to review the changes that the council has worked through in its many work sessions with lots of public input. This is the, the point in the process where the city manager's proposals for the budget become the community's budget through the council's action tonight with all of the input that you've received. Some of the key changes that the council has worked through and which are reflected in this ordinance. First, the compensation for city employees has been set at a 5.5% increase over the current base salary, and that was worked through with an understanding of, of a salary freeze that's been in effect since 2008, along with employee contributions of 5% in the basic plan for pension and 7% for the police plan. Second, the council reduced the budget amounts for Womata and for its contingency funds together by $350,000. Third, the council increased funding for paving and stormwater maintenance by $100,000, and this budget lays out $75,000 is an increase for paving and $25,000 for an increase for stormwater maintenance. Those are in the operating budget, not in the CIP. With those increases, particularly with respect to the paving, we're still below air levels of, prior to 2009, so we still have work to do to restore parts of our paving budget, but it will move us in the right direction to getting back towards addressing our worst streets in the city. The council has increased funding for park maintenance by $35,000. Again, that's in the operating budget, not in the CIP. The council reduced funding for the replacement of police vehicles from five proposed in my budget to three vehicles, and so we will target those three for the oldest vehicles in the fleet. Six, the council has proposed, did not fund the proposed temporary position of the fire marshal assistant. Seventh, council funded a competitive grant program for arts and culture as part of our implementation of the arts and cultural district in the city, and that was funded in the amount of $20,000. And eighth, in response to the request by the Northern Virginia Board of the Northern Virginia Community Colleges to increase our per capita rate for the capital program for community colleges, additional funding of $4,122 is provided. So that is a summary of, of the, the changes in the budget, and these are all reflected in the ordinance that's before the city council. Lastly, with respect to the capital improvements program, the CIP has some minor technical changes that reflect information we've received from the Virginia Department of Transportation. Notably, we've received the precise dollar amount that we've been granted for the Safe Routes to School program, and that will be budgeted in FY 13 in the amount of $472,500. Second, VDOT has confirmed the award of $600,000 in RSTP funds for FY 13, and those would be used for implementation of, ultimately, of the pedestrian plan. Other than those changes to the, the CIP, and again, that last change was really a change in the fiscal year. We weren't quite sure when VDOT was going to make those awards for the RSTP funds, and so we have gotten that confirmation from VDOT, and so that $600,000 is allocated in FY 13. That's a brief summary of changes to the CIP, and I will pause here to answer any questions that council has.
So any questions for Mr. Shields? Mr. Shields, I know that you did send council a note regarding a question that I had dealing with what the regional CIP is. If you can show those publicly as well. I'm sorry, CPI.
Yes, the CPI for the region, if you take the, the CPI for all items and you take it from, going from January to January of each year, cumulatively, over the period of time of which we've had a pay freeze in effect, it's a total of just over 8% increase in the Consumer Price Index. And so that information was provided to council.
Any other questions by council members? If I can get a motion, what I would suggest that we do, counsel, if I can get all three motions at the same time, if we can do that, can we do that?
Yes, we can.
Okay, why, why don't we take all three motions and then we'll vote on them separately?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Berry?
Yeah. Let's see if I have this right. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt TO 12-06. Is that correct, TO, to adopt TO 12-07, and to adopt TO 12-08?
Thank you. If I can get a second?
Second.
Is Mr. Webb on the second? I'd like to open up the budget, the various budget items up for public comment, and we'll take the speakers one at a time. The first speaker that I, speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Michael Ankuma, followed by Mr. De Genes.
Good evening, council. Mr. Mayor, vice mayor, members of the council, my name is Michael Ankuma, city resident. I live at 306 Roland Street, and I'm also chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, in which capacity I stand today. First of all, I'd like to thank... First of all, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Snyder, council members Pepe, and Webb, and city manager Shields for attending the chambers gala last Saturday. We're glad you could join us, and we hope you had a good time. On behalf of the chamber, it's, tonight, it has come to our attention that the, it's been recommended to the council to consider a cut in the city's planning division's budget, which would eliminate or place at risk two proposed planning department positions that the city manager has recommended. While the chamber has not had the opportunity to formally review this recommendation, members of the chamber's legislative committee have communicated concern over such cuts. Falls Church, we believe, stands at crossroads today, literally and figuratively. The region's economy is coming out of a recession. Surrounding areas such as Merrifield, Tyson's Corner, and Arlington are investing in new buildings, transportation, and development. The metro is expanding right at the edge of East Falls Church, and we believe if we do not seek smart development opportunities in the near future, Falls Church will be left behind. These other areas and its draw as a fabulous place to live, work, and do business will eventually diminish. Well-planned development is needed in Falls Church. I think we all agree on that. It will make our streets more attractive and our businesses more successful. It will reduce the tax burden on residents eventually. Smart growth can further the many wonderful things our community has to offer, such as walkability, green buildings, and successful local businesses. Our planning department needs adequate, actually, needs all the resources it can to guide these projects, and we strongly urge the council to accept Mr. Shields' staffing recommendations. Thank you.
And just so I'm clear on the position, it's basically to retain those positions that are in the proposed budget. Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. De Genes, followed by Mr. Jason Widstrom.
I just want to elaborate for the record that there is room within the budget to achieve more than an additional $35,000 to the park's maintenance, or to provide some tax relief or some additional planning money, and that would come from a reduction of the fund balance, which is out of line with neighboring jurisdictions. The council members all received an email from me documenting the fact that Arlington and Fairfax County have reserve balances of 5%. City of Fairfax is about 10% now, declining to 7%, so there's little justification. All of those jurisdictions retain a AAA bond rating. There's no justification for the City of Falls Church to be at 17%, and it's a reserve balance. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. Jason Widstrom.
Good evening, Mayor Baruch and members of council. As you know, my name is Jason Widstrom. I'm a civil engineer in public works, and I'm also Chair of the Employee Advisory Committee. I'm here tonight to show my support for the council's decision to provide a level of compensation higher than which, that was which proposed in the manager's budget. I know many of my colleagues appreciate the changes you've discussed in work sessions, which include the 5%, 5.5% increase over our current base salaries. The council's concerns about long-term financial sustainability has not gone unnoticed by employees, and like the past few years, this year had some tough decisions to make in light of uncertainty. As we all know, a budget is a planning document and a representation of the community's values. This is why I'm encouraged this body has decided to make employee compensation a priority in FY 13. It is an investment in the hard-working men and women that keep this city a special place. While I hope good financial time is ahead, it seems more reasonable that additional difficulties will be before the council in FY 14. Many employees believe there is still work to be done to remain competitive, to be an employer of choice. We hope you will continue your commitment to our efforts, and that compensation will once again be a high priority in FY 13, FY 14. Thank you.
The next speaker slip that I have is from Chris Hagerdorn.
Thank you, Mr. Member, Mr. Mayor, council members, city manager as well, for your reports. I wanted to speak out tonight. I've, as I mentioned earlier, recently returned to the city and have been catching up on city finances. I've just served in Rome last, where I was on the Finance Committee of the UN Food and Agriculture Commission, or Food and Agriculture Organization, which has a $2.5 billion budget. We had the financial oversight responsibility for that budget. And looking through the documents that I've had a chance to see, reading the Falls Church News Press and talking to several council members privately, I just wanted to make my views known publicly on the increases and the state of the city's budgets, given the tax rate, which, for property taxes at $1.27 per $100 of assessed value, certainly you all know that that is particularly high, given the Arlington rate of 97.8 cents per $100. Fairfax County is $1.07, and what I understand have taken place at an earlier meeting, a proposal to drop the rate by a penny was rejected and not taken up seriously, while the employees of the city are receiving a 5.5% increase. We have a PED plan for $22 million being vetted. It just seems to me, from the documents that I've had the opportunity to look on your own website, pension obligations, healthcare costs, other costs, in light of the finances, seem to put the city in some serious question a few years down the road. So, a number of concerns about that. I still think the tax rate is too high. Elections on May 1st will have a chance to elect three new members. Only one of the candidates has even mentioned the tax rate dropping. I hope all of you recognize that for federal employees like myself, we're on a fixed income. The city manager mentioned the inflation rates. This is coming, the high tax rates are coming straight out of our fixed incomes. I hope you will all seriously consider the impact that has on families here trying to raise children, and consider drop in the tax rates. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
The next speaker slip that I have is from Mr. David Lasso. Mr. Lasso?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I live at 322 Van Buren Street, and I want to come and thank you all for your actions at the work session and the changes you've made to the budget to increase employee compensation by the 5.5% amount. Your employees are your most valuable human resources. The most valuable resources are your employees, I meant to say. And frankly, the proclamation that was read earlier in celebration of public service really pretty much said it all. So, I'm certainly in favor of it. There's a lot of talk in the community because of the election, and everyone I talked to has recognized the need to catch up, or at least try to catch up, with neighboring jurisdictions and make Falls Church a place where quality employees want to come and work. So, thank you very much. Very much support that action.
Those are all the speaker slips that I have. Ms. Bishop, if you'd summarize any written comments we've received.
On the budget, Tina Ehrman at 226 Nolan Street supports the city budget and revenue-sharing agreement with the schools. Stephanie Oppenheimer at 610 North Oak Street supports the school budget request. Shawna Russell, 609 Poplar Drive, supports the school budget request. And council, you received two letters from the school board members, one asking the city council to allocate an equal share of any budget revenue surplus that may remain in the current fiscal year to the schools, and also requesting a revenue-sharing agreement for the FY 14 budget process to be in place by September 1st, 2012.
Thank you. Not seeing any other speaker slips. Are there any other members of the public who wish to address the budget items we're taking up? Not seeing any, I'm going to go ahead and close this to public comment, and it'll open it up for any questions that council members have or any comments that they have before we take the vote on the three items. Ms. Berry?
Mr. Mayor, I just have a number of comments. I will try not to take too much time. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank city staff for the time and attention they provided to me personally as the FY 13 budget was built. I want to thank particularly Richard Lacondre and Melissa from the finance staff, Tom Clinton, and Sam Comus, and Earl Conklin, and Dana Lewis from HHS for their assistance. If Earl and Dana would like to give me a pop quiz on Section 3 compliance, they certainly can. I would fail it, but it's not because they didn't provide me with the materials. So, really, thank you all for taking extra time out of your very busy schedule to walk me through some of the issues. The FY 13 budget, which I will support, was carefully crafted, and I think represents several important steps forward in addressing outstanding compensation needs, infrastructure needs, and fund balance requirements. But when the council instituted multi-year budgeting, and this is when I was elected to council in 2010, it was to provide a perspective for current numbers as they impact the out years. However imperfect, multi-year planning provides a sense of trajectory of income and expense. I would like to bring all of our intention, all of our attention to the impact of our decision-making in FY 13 as it affects FY 14 and beyond, where we are looking at a growing deficit, which will demand an increase on real property tax of anywhere between, according to Mr. Lacondre's figures, you know, eight to nine cents on the tax dollar. So, I would say that our work as a community is cut out for us, and I would like us to come together to define our priorities for FY 14 and beyond. And, Mr. Mayor, I would also like, if I may, to direct this to staff. I would like the FY 13 budget to be the last budget in which there is any confusion or uncertainty about the destination of the DMV select revenue. I ask that staff and the Commission of Revenue determine a transparent way to reflect the DMV revenue and associated expenses in the budget, and that there be full and equitable agreement as to the management of those revenues and expenditures. I think the city and its residents are not well-served by this ongoing debate, and I ask that the matter be resolved. Thank you.
Other council members? Ms. Gardner?
Thank you. First of all, I want to support Ms. Berry's request in regards to the DMV select and the transparency that's needed. So, I think that, I know that she has spent a lot of time touring, talking, and we have, and I'm sure most in council have been very frustrated with the situation on how to tell what money's coming, where it's going, and we get explanations on both sides, and it's very unsatisfying. So, I would like to see a change in that area. I'll be supporting tonight's budget. The main reason I'm supporting tonight's budget is that our city staff will be receiving a 5.5% increase. I'd like to think that, I would have liked to, of course, seen more, but based on the things that we are doing in our budget, I know that 5.5 was as far as we could go. I know that Mr. Snyder had talked about reducing the tax rate to $1.26, which I thought was a great idea, but the only way I would have supported that is if we could have found the money to do it. And that money, for me, which would have come from not putting as much into the fund balance as we are to get it to 17% and staying on the trajectory that we had planned on, and I think this year it would have been 15% and next year 16%. So, but I know that is not a popular opinion by the rest of council, so I will just say that if it was, that's where I would have reduced our tax rate, because I think the things that we are paying for need to be paid for. Our city staff has gone long enough without being compensated for the fine work that they do, and I agree with all those that have said that our most important asset in this community is our human resource and the people that are doing the work for us. So, I will be supporting tonight's budget.
Mr. Webb?
Thank you. I, too, will be supporting the budget tonight. It's a budget that we have worked, I think, very hard to take care of some of the needs that have gone to, have been put on hold for a while, and it's an opportunity for us to find ways to rectify some of those problems. I, too, agree with Councilmember Berry that we need to currently, right now, work with the manager and the Commission of Revenue's office to handle the long-term dispute over the revenues coming into the office, and I do trust that that office has provided great public service. We just got a person calling tonight telling about the great service that they provide. So, I think there is a way for Mr. Shields and Mr. Clinton to get together and come up with a solution to this problem. Also, with the regards to the tax rate, I, too, think that what we're, with the $1.27, I think we've gotten to the point that I had hoped that we would, that we were able to fund the much-needed areas that we have talked about by finding ways within that current $1.27 rate of reducing some areas that may not need to be taken care of at this particular point. The police cars being an area that I felt that we did not need to fund five police cars at this time. So, we are able to find ways to keep the rate at what it is and not having to increase our tax rate. But I do feel that we have some tough roads to go still, and I think we still have some continued tough decisions to be made to make sure that the city stays financially solvent. And I encourage all of our citizens to take their, take opportunities to let us know what some of their priorities are, because that's what's going to keep us on the road to recovery, is prioritizing the needs of the city. And I know from being on council and prior to that, that our citizens definitely will take an active role in making sure that we prioritize what we need in the city and not what we want, but what we need to take care of.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Other council members? Mr. Pepe?
Well, I agreed with everything that Ms. Berry said, and not because this is a perfect budget, but because at the end of the day, I think we went through a process and made some hard choices. And even if a majority of us support this budget, which is where it appears to be headed, there's still a lot of disagreement about particular issues, just like there's some disagreement in the community. We were at meetings where we heard people say, "Raise my taxes so you can give more to this," and other people said, "Lower my taxes and take it away from here." And one of our jobs is to try and look at the big picture and figure out the best way to make that work together. I would like to point out, we got a number of emails saying, "Well, how comes nobody ever stands up to the schools?" And from looking at the process, I think there was a lot of back and forth, a lot of dialogue, and the schools had to justify their request as well. The per pupil funding has gone down significantly over the past few years, and with the growth, they were at a point where there was a need for some changes to be made there as well. I will say, everybody's putting their wish list out for next year. There is no reason we can't come up with a funding formula. I keep hearing everybody say they're in favor of it, and yet it's not getting done. So, you know, I think we have to set a deadline and start working towards that, and I think the school side, you know, we talked about this when I was on that side, that it goes both good and bad. You come up with a formula, and it can go both ways, and I think everyone understands that, and we have a basis we can work on. So, I think that's sort of one of the next steps we need to work on once we get this done.
Mr. Cameron?
Let me give some numbers behind this idea that was raised by Ms. Berry regarding next year's budget and the ones going forward. We're projecting a $1.9 million budget shortfall, which assumes a 2% increase in revenues. In other words, the tax rate under the current projections would have to be increased by six cents to $1.33. Included in the expected expenditures is a 4.3% increase in the school's operating budget. If passed as prologue, the actual request could be larger. If the city were to cut expenditures to reduce the shortfall, assuming no reduction in a school's budget of 4.3%, the budget increase, the school's budget increase, the following cuts would be required. This is an idea. The entire FY 14 CIP would have to be eliminated. That is, the city hall rehabilitation, the new school building at the Cherry Street location, Mount Daniel construction, the IT expenditures, and the library, which could not be funded in FY 14. The estimated savings of that would be, generously speaking, about $1.2 million. If the city's, you know, the city's operating budget, except for interjurisdictional cost increases over which the city has no control, and non-discretionary expenses like pensions, would need to be held flat. Among other things that would be required, that's assuming a salary freeze for all city staff, the estimated savings would be between $300,000 to $500,000. staff, the estimated savings would be between $300,000 to $500,000. That would still leave a shortfall of $200,000 to $500,000, or 1 to 2 cents the tax increase. That's if all those reductions were made. This takes us back to the need for additional planning staff. I cannot stress enough the need to create new revenue sources. If revenue growth next year exceeds projections due to higher assessments, it is the same thing as a real estate tax increase, except that it is uneven and creates winners and losers. We need to have the additional planners in order to quickly rezone the city's business districts so that we can provide some degree of certainty as to what the city is actually prepared to approve, thus providing a guide to developers on how much they may wish to pay for land consolidation. The city's finances are still fragile, and we need to be very careful about believing that tax reductions in the near future are likely. And in terms of revenue sharing, I need to throw in a little sense of realism here. Revenue sharing for the next couple of years, unless we get real revenue increases, will mean, how do we share the cuts? It's not going to be excess revenue unless we get some substantial new revenues. And I think we have to do that with eyes open. I'm sure there'll be other comments that I can add. I have more than a small arsenal of facts and figures if it's deemed valuable.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to start with a motion to amend TO 12-06 where we set the tax rate at 1.27. I move that it be reduced to 1.26.
If I can get a second, please. Not getting a second, that motion fails.
Let the record reflect that the motion failed because no one supported it.
I support it, so we can discuss it.
Sure.
So we've got a second so we can discuss it.
Thanks very much. The issue with regard to the budget is that there are some things that can be taken care of at the 1.26 level quite effectively. For example, full funding of the schools, the 5.5% for the employees, and the fund balance. Where this budget goes off-track is a significant increase in the bureaucracy, and when you put all that together, you lead with a, you end up with a 1.27 tax rate. Now, the notion that the tax rate is even is true, but the fact of the matter is that our citizens and businesses paid $2 million more in real estate taxes this year than they did last year. So this is not a "hold the line" on taxes. This is a tax increase budget. So let's make that clear. Secondly, we've heard from a number of our citizens. We heard from Mr. Hegedorn tonight, and we heard from Mr. McDonnell about the pain that this has inflicted on our citizens. And I, as I go door-to-door and talk to people, senior citizens saying they're being priced out of their houses, others look at the tax rate, and they're astounded at the difference between us and other jurisdictions. Let me read from a letter from one of our citizens that we received today. "Absent additional scrutiny of the budget and a reduction in the tax rate, taxpayers will endure another tax increase and continue to lose ground in the city as the current amount we pay, we must pay, continues to rise faster than inflation." He went on to say, "I ask you all to be as considerate of me and my family as you seem to be of the city employees." And he concludes with, "I hope there are more of you on the council that side with the taxpayers and bring the budget into balance at a still hefty 1.26 cent rate instead of the current 1.27 cent rate." So how would I do it? Well, I'd take the savings, half of the Lamotta budget that we've set aside as a reserve because it's been shown that we don't need that, and this budget that'll likely be approved does that. It dips only slightly, to somewhat, into some sort of fund to deal with potential shortfalls in revenue. Frankly, more could be taken out of that. I would take that, and I would remove all the proposed non-public safety-related positions. I come out with a savings number of $718,000. I would grant the city employees the 5.5%, which is about $257,000. That would yield a net of $560,000, basically $300,000 for the 1-cent tax rate, and you still have $260,000 to use as may be essential. This budget is also peculiar because the places where it cuts the city manager's proposal is in the area of public safety. It refuses to fund police cars, and it cuts a part-time fire marshal. So I'm wondering, where's the priority in this budget? We fund certain things that are good to have, but we don't fund essentials like police cars and part-time fire marshal. So I'm wondering, where's the priority there? And I could fund all of that and still come up with a 1-cent tax rate decrease. The planning positions, even under the numbers, you could probably have one additional planner, although I'm wondering why we need planners? Is it to get more ped plans? So frankly, I would use the existing planning staff. I've been unimpressed at the results that I've seen with this so-called area plans. If the money were actually going into the Economic Development Office, then that would be an entirely different story. I just don't buy that we need a lot more planners at this point to get economic development. I would note as well that with a tax decrease over the 1.27, that's an important business development issue. Not only are you, of course, helping families, but you're helping businesses and landowners pay less in taxes. And that would be a much better business development tool than hiring some planners who maybe 30 years down the road have a plan that might help us, or maybe not, based upon what I've seen of the plans so far. So for all of these reasons, and then there's the argument, "Well, we'll have to raise taxes in the future." Well, I don't believe in holding the tax rate today artificially high to make it easier for politicians in the future to pass on taxes. I believe that tax rates today should reflect the realities of today, that we should not artificially hold the tax rate high based upon dubious assumptions in the future and the sense that, "Oh, it'll just make us easier to raise the taxes in the future because we're starting at a higher level." So for all of these reasons, I move to reduce the tax rate to 1.26. Our fundamental priorities can be taken care of. I would restore money back into public safety that was removed, and reduce the tax rate to 1.26, and thereby, I think, be more reflective of the values of this community and the interests of the taxpayers. So thank you very much, and so that's where I am. Thank you.
So right now, what's before council is the motion to amend, actually, TO 12-06 to have the tax rate set at $1.27, or, I'm sorry, $1.26. Comments? Mr. Callen?
Well, I knew that was going to be, when I wanted the opportunity to get this out into the public. I just disagree with just about everything Mr. Snyder said. In part, this is the rationale, if I recall, was, as he just mentioned, that the city council should leave the savings in the pockets of the citizens, and they could better utilize the savings than the city council. This is the second time I've heard that, maybe third time, and I've had a little time difficulty getting my head around the thought that, in this sense, the citizens could use the tax savings better than the city council. The council member who's made that suggestion has been on the council for five terms, which suggests that he believes his performance over the period of time has been substandard. I've already explained to everyone the budget deficits that we're going to experience next year, so we know for a fact that the 1 cent you get this year will have to be paid back next year. So don't think for a minute that this is going to be a tax rate that's going to hold. We have debt deficits next year, and the year after, and the one thing, and the year after that. The one thing that I was hoping to avoid also was volatility in the staff increases and so forth, which we're going to build into this process. The lack of savings, as I've told you, is going to be a serious problem going forward. The idea of going into the fund balance, I'm glad this came up again because it is something I think we need to discuss. I appreciate the gentleman, Mr. Ledger Newses, if I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name, iconoclastic views on this, but the city of Falls Church seems to have a unique concept that real estate taxes have increased this year, our dependency on real estate taxes increases, and the way you protect yourself against the increased concentration, lack of diversity, and exposure to the vagaries of the market is to cut your reserves. It is a unique approach to financial management which I cannot share. There is no explanation in terms of the numbers that were provided. There's always a story. I wonder how, and maybe Mr. LaCondre can provide us some idea of how the other jurisdictions actually calculate their general fund, and what's an apples-to-apples comparison. I cannot understand why, given the city's proven fragility, why we would choose to put more pressure on future taxes, incur new risks in supporting the schools, new risks in needed stormwater and other facilities, in order to get a one-time, that's it, it's a one-time, one-set tax increase, because next year it will be added to whatever we need, and to short-circuit the chance of developing long-term development. I think we have a very good planning staff. I think we have a wonderful director of planning. The pedestrian plan is a separate issue. This is involving, how do we generate new revenues? The only thing I agree with is that the tax assessment increases are tax rate increases. That is not the way to go. It is simply not sustainable. Sooner or later, people simply would not be able to pay. On a personal note, I'm a pensioner, and I've had virtually no increases in my pension in four years, so I don't need to be told about what it means to have high taxes when you're living on a fixed income. And anyway, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you, at this moment.
Other council members? And again, we are on the motion that was presented by Vice Mayor Snyder. Okay. I'd like to just make some brief comments on the motion that was provided, and certainly Vice Mayor Snyder and I have worked together over the course of the last several years and even before that. And when I looked at the budget and tried to figure out a way to actually do a reduction in taxes or the tax rate this year, and how meaningful that would be, what I walked away from is the cuts that would need to be made would go to some critical policy issues that the council had set in its objectives, working with the citizens. And one, it was the need for greater expansion in our economic development model, to work through that, to provide further staffing increases that we need to make that economic development planning happen. We've heard from Mr. Michael Ann Kuma regarding their, the chamber's view of that, and I think that that's very important to acknowledge as well. In addition to trying to find that penny, that would also require further cuts potentially due to cost of borrowing, and this goes back to the fund balance of infrastructure development. One of the commitments that this council had very early on in its term and process was to ensure that we began to fund our infrastructure that we had cut back on because of the recession. And we found even more dollars to do that by cutting the operating expenses, by removing some money out of particular reserves, to put more money into schools and stormwater management and roads. So I think that needs to be highlighted. To get that tax rate any further down, we would have to cut back on those items as well as reducing the fund balance, which would then potentially have consequences for our borrowing capacity and our ability to cushion in the future. So as much as I'd like to do a one-time further tax reduction, and let's be honest about it, I'm up for reelection. It would be great to say that I've reduced the taxes by another penny, but I don't think it would be prudent, I don't think it would be in the long-term interest of the city, and therefore, I'm not supportive of it. All right. With that, if we can have the roll on the motion.
If I might, before we have that vote, I do want to challenge one comment that was made, that the budget that I propose would not be able to provide the additional funding for the stormwater and the other infrastructure. In fact, it would. What it would not fund is many of the positions outside of public safety that the city manager has requested. Thank you.
And I think just on the public service, so the public is aware, that had to do with vehicles. The original proposal was five, and I believe that was cut by two vehicles, so we're at three vehicles to rotate those through. Speaking to staff, they felt that that was something that was manageable as we do that. So that's what allowed some further cutting to be done, allowed for some flexibility to further stormwater management and some other capital projects. And my point about the infrastructure is, some of it would require changes to the fund balance, which would have effects potentially on our cost of borrowing. So in my view, it would have a direct impact on how we would support our infrastructure development in the future and the years to come. And again, certainly while it would be an easy decision to do now, it would have consequences in the future, as we talked about, and really, in my view, making it difficult to fund other infrastructure improvements that the community needs and certainly seeks, dealing with schools and stormwater management.
Are you ready for the roll, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
This is on Mr. Snyder's motion, seconded by Mr. Callen on TO 12-06 to amend the tax rate from 1.27 to 1.26. Ms. Berry?
No.
Ms. Gardner?
No.
Mr. Callen?
No.
Mr. Pepe?
No.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
No.
Mayor Bru.
No.
Thank you, counsel. The motion failed, six to one.
I believe we are back on the original motion at this point. So why don't we take these items one at a time, but open it up first. I think council probably, dare I say, has some further comments. We may have just covered them, but do any council members have any further comments before we take the vote? Ms. Berry?
Yes, I'd like to address the issue of the CIP, specifically the issue of LEED policy. I understand that the, well, I recall that council was clear and in concordance on wanting to establish a LEED policy, specifically LEED Silver for public buildings and large infrastructure such as school buildings. ESC, I think the city staff has been working on it, and the environmental services council has been working on it and is about to refer some language to the Planning Commission to be determined, to be voted on, on April 30. I just wanted to say, I regret the timing insofar as this document, the CIP document, accurately indicates that without language, guiding language, the CIP projects in FY13 are not guided by the LEED certification language, but certainly in FY14 and beyond, we will expect that the financial requirements associated with LEED certification will be part of the CIP, and we would certainly like to see the long-term financial benefits also made explicit in all of these documents. So while I regret we couldn't get the CIP language in FY13, I'm certainly looking forward to seeing it in FY14 and beyond.
Other? Mr. Callen?
On a follow-on of a pre-work session, we talked about getting a 20-year facilities plan, and will that, could we make sure that that happens? Is there anything we need to do?
That is referenced in the [inaudible].
Oh, okay.
[inaudible].
Great.
Yeah, and I think we're taking that up early fall.
Correct. I would propose that it be in place as staff start developing the next CIP. We have an integrated facility plan in place.
Thank you. Other council members? Last opportunity before I go. Okay. Just like to make a couple of comments regarding the budget and the CIP as a whole, that the FY13 budget and the capital improvement program are the product of a great deal of discussion and work, and meet the critical needs of the city in these difficult financial times. While I'll be supporting the budget ordinance and the CIP, this budget and CIP strikes a healthy balance between the city's fund balance, the needs of city employees, schools, and services, and it- and services, and it meets the council's policy objectives of strengthening economic development, providing greater resources for infrastructure improvements to address items such as school facilities and stormwater management. Therefore, I'll be supporting the budget. A couple of things that I would just want to note as we move forward. First, on the revenue sharing, I think we just need to make a decision on that, and we've had a work session where we've discussed that before, and staff's been directed already to work through a few pieces of remaining items to see if it's workable or not. I hope that it is, but there's some, some issues that need to be tackled. Two, moving ahead, I'd like us, on the planning positions, as we've talked about, there has to be a metrics put into place, so I'm asking the city manager to make sure those metrics are in place. If the planners aren't meeting the economic development goals, in my view, those positions need to be pulled or scaled back for the next budget. So, and we were clear, I think, on that during our work sessions, that there would be a need for a metrics there. And third, moving forward, I think that we need to renew our commitment on infrastructure. We were, we've been really deferring a lot of maintenance. It's catching up with us, and I'm committed to ensuring that our stormwater management and school facility needs are met, and I think we need to look forward and begin to have that discussion as soon as we close the books on this budget and move to the next budget. We need to start addressing those priorities with the community. So I'd like to see those discussions happen as soon as possible as we move forward with the budget of this year. So with that, if we can, for the roll call. And why don't we take one item at a time? Or actually, yeah, we do have to vote individually.
Okay. There was a motion to pass each, each item made as one motion. On the first item, TO 12-06, which is the tax rate of 127, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. On the budget for FY13, TO 12-07, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
No.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. On the CIP for FY1317, TO 12-08, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Those are the three budget items. The next item before you, counsel, is TO 12-09, ordinance to amend the budget of expenditures and revenues of the general fund, the water fund, and the capital improvement fund to appropriate grants, bond proceeds, and use of fund balance, and to appropriate the expenditures and revenues of the affordable housing fund for FY 2012.
Happy Monday, counsel. This is the second reading of this resolution. What it calls for is the allocation of primarily bond proceeds and to amend the budget to incorporate those items and to have them dispersed. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Counsel, any questions for Mr. LaConde?
We already had a bunch of questions.
Okay. All right. Let me, if I can get a motion, and then we'll open it up for public comment.
I have to adopt that your...
Thank you. Any members of the public who wish to address this item? Okay, not seeing any. I'm going to close this for public comment, and I don't believe we received any written comments on this particular item. Go ahead and have the vote called. I take it, counsel, doesn't have any comments on this?
On TO 12-09, Ms. Berry?
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Next item is consent. Mr. City Manager?
Counsel, there's just one item on the consent calendar, and that is authorization for the city manager to award a contract for water storage tank engineering and maintenance services to Gannett Fleming Incorporated. And this would be, if there are any tasks associated with this contract, they'd come back for counsel, but this is to keep this firm under retainer.
If I can get a motion, please.
Mayor, I move to authorize the city manager to award a contract for water storage tank engineering and maintenance services to Gannett Fleming Incorporated, and renew the contract annually for seven additional one-year terms, subject to annual appropriations of funds by city council in the budget.
Second.
Thank you. If I can get the roll called on the consent item, please.
Yes.
Ms. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kalin?
Yes.
Mr. Pepe?
Yes.
Mr. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mayor Baruch?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel.
The next item on the agenda, counsel, is a business not on the agenda, which we don't have any. Councilmember comments and requests? Mr. Webb?
Just one quick request. At the next work session, if the city manager can give an update of any conversations that he has had with the Kaiser Permanente folks about the possibility of shared parking.
Thank you, Mr. Webb, for reminding us about that. Other council members? Not seeing any. We are on to approval of minutes of previous meetings. Why don't we move to the March 26 minutes? Counsel, any changes or comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, on line 222, where it says, it's like the fifth line of line 22, which is sort of interesting in and of itself, but in any event, it is the fifth line after line 222.
222.
222.
Snyder, thank the staff.
It reads in the fourth line, "Where there were none now," that should read, "Where there was one now."
Thank you.
Others, counsel? Ms. Berry?
There is a typo on line 117. "They were the heart and soul of Falls Church." I think you meant S.O.U.L.
I put fish.
Yes, you did. S.O.L.E.
I must have been hungry.
Heart and soul. But our employees are the heart and soul of the city.
Ms. Berry, thanks for correcting my comments.
Did you mean fish?
I did not mean fish.
This is what happens when you're hungry and you're doing US.
And I did not catch it when I was looking at this.
Anyone else, counsel?
All right. Thank you. Let's vote on that one first.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the minutes of March 26th as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstained.
One abstention. That's Mr. Pepe on the abstention.
Thank you. The next item is April 9th. Counsel, do you have any changes to those?
Yes, Madam Clerk, line 96, fourth line, beginning with "Council should grant employees more compensation and reduce," delete the "and" after reduce, "the tax rate by 1 cent by prohibiting further growth of the bureaucracy with the creation of the new requested positions" rather than "two new requested positions."
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder.
Other council members? Okay, if I can get a motion on this set of minutes, please.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes as amended.
For...
Minutes, I'm sorry, the minutes of April 9, 2012.
Thank you. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, I need a second.
Second.
Ms. Gardner, round the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, the ayes have it, the minutes are approved.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. If I can get a motion to adjourn, please.
I move to adjourn.
If I can get a second, please.
Okay.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you all.